Senator Clark, November 19th, to call the regular meeting of the Waverly City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Bergen.
Here.
Drinkow.
Here.
Kangas.
Here.
McKenzie.
Here.
Raffey.
Here.
Sheriff.
President.
Waltzheim.
Here.
Our guest councilperson called me earlier this evening and had a conflict, so Ben will not be here tonight. Thank you. Entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
I move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion to approve the agenda carried seven zero. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 22nd, 2018 study session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. This is a time and date and place for a public hearing on the proposal to issue hospital revenue bonds or notes in one or more series in a principal amount not to exceed $37 million for the purpose of financing capital improvement projects for the benefit to the Waverly Health Center. I'll open the public hearing, but maybe, Mr. Addy, would you like to give us an overview of everything?
Yes, very good.
So the public knows what we're talking about.
So first of all, thank you for your support and your consideration. We were here about a month ago talking to you about this. Nothing has changed to this point. We are still looking at a project to address some needs at the hospital primarily centered on the clinic space, the emergency room, and some outdated infrastructure that does go back to 1964. It's our hope that utilizing USDA funds, we will be able to accomplish these objectives. USDA gave us a project not to exceed $37 million, and that's why we have come to you for the construction notes to get us through the planning phase from now until we complete the project and we can get those USDA funds in that same amount. Just a couple of things to remind the public. We do not receive any taxes on like, there are 80 critical access hospitals, 84 critical access hospitals, 55 of them receive some sort of tax benefit from 500 to close to $4 million. We receive none. We've remained independent. We are financially viable organization right now, and we see this as just our bridge to get our hands on the USDA funds that we've already been allotted. So once again, thank you for your support, and I'd be happy to field any questions if necessary.
Very good. Open the public hearing. Anyone here that cares to speak? Seem none to close the public hearing and entertain a motion by the council.
File move approval of resolution 18-158, a resolution determining to proceed with issuance of hospital revenue notes in an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $27,63,000, setting parameters and approving indenture of trust, one or more bond purchase agreements, and the use of an official statement and other documents related to the notes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counsel discussion.
I guess I just, why are we approving $27 million in the principal?
I do.
Go ahead, you know my question.
I do. The $37 million is a not to exceed amount for the toll. The $27 million is basically the amount of notes that will be needed from the USDA when it comes in. You could call them bond anticipatory notes, they're just a gap financing to get us to that point. The other balance would be able to be funded by regular hospital revenue, but this is the actual loan amount that would need to be done. It's kind of a two-part financing.
Another part to that is that those bonds in no way obligate the city for payment.
Yes, sir.
Particularly the hospital revenue bonds, is that?
Yes, it is. There, once again, there is no extension of liability for any of the hospital's activities back onto the city. However, since we are a city hospital, we have to come to the city for the, for kind of the rubber stamp to move forward with some of these activities. And so, it's a step that we have to go through, but in no way are we jeopardizing any of the city's plans, funding, or funding sources.
Very good, thank you. Any other counsel discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffey.
Yes.
Sheriff.
Yes.
Waltzheim.
Yes.
Resolution 18-158 approved seven zero. Resolution 18-159, a resolution providing for the issuance and securing the payment of future obligations for the purposes of borrowing money for the Waverly Health Center. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of resolution 18-159 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counsel discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffey.
Yes.
Sheriff.
Yes.
Waltzheim.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Motion, resolution 18-159 approved seven zero. Item number two, this is a date, time, and place for a public hearing on the proposed amendment number three to the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan in the city of Waverly. Entertained, I would open up public hearing, entertain any comments. Seem none to close the public hearing, entertain a motion for the resolution.
I move approval of resolution 18-160, resolution determining an area of the city to be an economic development area and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, or a combination thereof of such area is necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting amendment number three to the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counsel discussion.
All right, I'm just going to make a statement on this as the other question or even really that much of an issue, but my whole concern, and I know later on we're going to be voting on amending the TIF resolution, and I plan on supporting both of those because I think TIF is an excellent way of providing financing for some of these projects. My concern is to make sure that we're being consistent and fair when we're evaluating these development proposals so that we don't favor one group over another group or make it appear like we're favoring somebody, one group over another group. And the other issue that I have is that we typically don't see these development agreements here at the council. At least my experience has been here in the last 10 months or so since I've been on council until they're pretty much signed, sealed, and delivered. And our approval is pretty much pro forma because everything has already been negotiated, set the contracts, everything's ready to go, we give it our stamp, and everything goes forward. I guess I want to make sure that when these development agreements are being negotiated that the city staff has some kind of guideline that they're following, that the council has input into so that there are rules that can be followed and goals that we would have in the city on how we want to proceed, what kind of projects we want to fund, and you know, what kinds of things we want to accomplish by funding those projects. I don't know if we have that right now. If we do have it, I haven't seen it, but I think going forward it would be a very good thing for us to do as a council to take a look at the way that we are financing some of these development projects and say, okay, what kind of guidelines can we set so that when someone comes to the city and wants to finance a development program using TIF or anything else that's available, that we can say, okay, how are we going to evaluate that from the city in terms of whether we're going to support that project or not? What kind of projects do we want to support? You know, to what level are we going to support them? What kinds of things can we anticipate that we would want to have in, you know, evaluating these projects? I don't, I don't want it to be just a city staff evaluation. I think that this is something that as a council we need to provide some kind of guidance on. I don't want to be involved in every single negotiation that comes up in this. That's not our responsibility, and that's not something we want to do, but I think in terms of developing a guideline and a policy on how these development agreements are brought forward, I think is very important and one of the responsibilities that we have as a council.
James or Bill, would you care to address Rod's concerns?
Well, previously, we have discussed and brought forward a strategy that we discussed with the council and that we adopted, the council adopted previously. We've used that as a guide to how we negotiate with different developers and different projects. We haven't had that many in recent years. We believe that we have been following that strategy. It was one that has been discussed. And I think we'll do that going forward. We do have to do quite a bit of preliminary negotiation when it comes to these things because it would be unwieldy to do that kind of discussion in a setting such as a meeting like this. It makes it very difficult, and you can't do more than a couple of council members at a time.
Right, no, I completely understand that.
And we try to bring some of those facts and some of the things that we're doing somewhat to the council's attention. As soon as we bring forward some ideas to the Economic Development Commission, we intend to copy the council in on it at that time. And I think that's the right way to do it because if you think that the commission is considering something, then that's about the time you should be looking at it too because it'll come to you in the next month after that, so.
I guess what I would like to see, Bill, is a copy of whatever guidelines it is that you're referring to that you have available. And I think that, I'm not sure when those guidelines were adapted or adopted, but if it has been a number of councils ago, it may be a good idea to take a look at those guidelines and evaluate them and whether they need to be updated and whether this council still supports the goals that those guidelines were attempting to facilitate.
Okay, I'll provide those to you, and we can have a discussion after that.
That would be a comment that I would have, that if there is a written document that particularly the newer council people such as Rod and Brian and AM would be privy to see those. And of course, out of those negotiations, there's a certain sense of confidentiality that has to go along with it, so, but, very good. Any other discussion on?
I think this has probably been mentioned before, but I'm looking at the city map on page 47 of the supporting documentation, and we've got, the legend gives us three kinds of shading, and I always have a hard time figuring out what's what on these charts. I don't know which is which, and maybe somebody's chart is better than mine, but especially the, well, they're all, it's just confusing to me. Is there a better way to do this so that we can figure out what we're talking about with these zones?
That's why we've tried to put captions on each one of them that is affected, and I've tried to give partial numbers when I've done the background work. So if you see the agenda memo, it identifies each parcel by the name of the owner and the parcel number.
Yeah.
And then on that map, which is, which doesn't translate well in the PDF form for this in the Agenda Manager, when you see it, it's still kind of hard to read because it's a big map. And we're doing, we're talking about very small parcels comparatively instead of large areas. But I'm glad, if you want to sit down with me, I'll show you where each one is located. The three that we're adding in on this plan were the ones that were removed previously so that we could start the 20 years over since we really haven't done anything with those three parcels. And then the other ones that we're taking out are all very undeveloped, either bare land or undeveloped property that again is nearing the end of the 20-year life cycle of the first plan. So we're trying to leave us some opportunity to put those back in in the future. I wouldn't think that we put everything back in right away. We don't want to get the same situation we did before. So if we have some promise of a potential development, we might put a property or two back in in a simple amendment next year.
I appreciate everything you're saying, I'm just complaining about the graphic. I mean, I thought we could get four different colors or something, that would be helpful.
I completely agree with Mike, and I find the map very hard to read even when I zoom in on it, and it doesn't scale well when you zoom in on it. So I've seen some documents where it's clear that I'm seeing somehow the original version of it, and there's others where it's clear that it's scanned in, and yeah.
And I can get the original in a ledger-sized map that you can actually read, and that comes out clear, and you can see the captions, so I can do that if you'd like.
This is the map that gets published in the paper, so it's.
Yeah, they really can read it there.
It's going to be that size, so.
And it's a legal requirement that we publish the map.
Yeah.
And it's available for people to come view if they can't read it or can't see it, so we can always make that available. That's why I tried, in the past, they've just been areas that have been bordered by streets, and here we've identified exact parcels, which is really, the auditor loves it compared to what we did before because it's so much easier to identify the parcels that are either in or out, and for tax purposes and for doing the TIF capture, it's a lot easier to know exactly what property we're talking about. So we're now doing parcels more than areas.
Okay, any other questions, discussion?
I don't know if it'd be another, another document that may be helpful is the document that shows our past incentives, just to kind of round out, kind of, here's the guideline that they've been working with, here's how they've applied them when the different projects are out there. Because if you look historically, it's in that three, five to eight percent range for the city's portion of it, it's usually infrastructure or something like that, those type of things. So I think they've got a good set of documents to work from for planning purposes, and that may help everybody kind of see how it's been applied in the past.
And what we did in the last strategy is try to provide identification of factors that you look for, and it isn't necessarily just the numeric type of things. It's, you know, green development or businesses that aren't represented now, or restoring blighted areas, or restoring historic buildings, or, those are different kind of criteria. Those aren't real, they're sort of subjective, but we wanted to identify a lot of those factors so that we could then look at the other kind of financial charts where we start looking at, well, if they do this many jobs, we look at five to 10 percent, or, and we have some of those things too in that latest strategy. So I'll provide those to you.
Great, thank you.
Very good. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, resolution 18-160, please.
Kangas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffey.
Yes.
Sheriff.
Yes.
Waltzheim.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Motion for resolution 18-160 is approved, seven zero. Next item, this is a date, time, and place for a public hearing on an ordinance adopting the city code of the city of Waverly, Iowa. Open up public hearing, anyone here that wishes to speak to that? I can read the ordinance 1052, adopting the city code of Waverly, Iowa, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Waverly, Iowa, that section one, that all existing ordinances previously adopted and made a part of the city code of the city of Waverly, Iowa, 2000, and all subsequent amendments thereto are hereby read adopted by the city of Waverly, Iowa, and are known as the city code of the city of Waverly, Iowa. Section two, that all provisions for the city code is read adopted shall continue to be in full force and effect from the date of the passage and publication of this ordinance, that an official copy of the city code of the city of Waverly, Iowa, adopted by this ordinance, including a certificate of the city clerk as to its adoption and effective date, is on file in the office of the city clerk. The copies of the city code of the city of Waverly, Iowa shall be kept available at the office of the city clerk for public inspection, that this ordinance shall be and is in full force and effect from and after its final passage and approval as provided by law. Read that for the benefit of our viewing audience.
I'll move to approve the second reading of ordinance 1052, adopting the city code of the city of Waverly, Iowa.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any counsel discussion?
Is it just saying we're not going to lapse into anarchy?
Something like that, something like that. Roll call vote, please.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffey.
Yes.
Sheriff.
Yes.
Waltzheim.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Ordinance is carried seven zero. Next item is public comments for items not on the agenda. Anyone here that?
Hi, Jim, Waverly Health Center.
You bet.
Really quick, just wanted to say thank you. We appreciate your help in this manner, specifically, James, thank you for all of your help in getting the paperwork. This has been a cumbersome process, but we believe that we now have all the antecedents to move forward with our project. As a reminder, the hospital does not exist to just make money. The hospital exists to do three things in order, take care of patients, take care of employees, and do those in a financially sound way. By having this building, updating it, we believe that we will be building an asset that the community continues to build on for years to come, okay? Our commitment to you is that we will continue to keep our priorities in order, and that we'll continue to hopefully be something that you all can rely on as Waverly continues to grow. Thank you all.
Very good, thank you, Jim. And I know from experience that I appreciate all the staff and facilities that's available to the communities, so. Any other comments? We'll move on to consent calendar. Following items will be acted upon by one vote unless someone has from the council or public request that a specific item be considered separately. Pay request from lodge construction for the citywide sidewalk and pedestrian ramp repairs 2018 for the amount of $32,497.31. Pay request from WHKS and Company for the Adlin Parkway Bridge and Horton Road repairs 2019 for the amount of $8,991.39. Pay request from VJ Engineering for Cedar Lane Reconstruction 2019 in the amount of Pay request from Krangren Associates Incorporated for the Cedar River Parkway East Improvements 2018 for the amount of $929,148.44, along with the cash disbursements for 2000, October of 2018. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion made to approve the consent calendar. Any counsel discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Consent calendar is approved, seven to zero. Next item is Champions Ridge update to the council. Fred, are you here to give us some words of wisdom?
Fred Ribbitz with Champions Ridge. Just one quick observation about the discussion regarding maps. Back in my day, when we were on council, everything was provided to us on paper. And city staff, Carla probably remembers, delivering packets that were very thick and heavy, but we had colored maps. I don't think anybody ever complained about not being able to understand the maps.
I don't want to deliver again, though.
Maybe just the colored maps, where did it go?
Can't use color in papers.
I hope the IT people take no offense. Anyway, Champions Ridge is happy to report that over the last several weeks, not quite two months, since we reported in early September, we've received donations in the amount of about $176,000. The report that I shared with council indicates that as of a week ago Tuesday, we were at $680,314, we had set a benchmark that we were hoping to reach by that date, or by this, actually, the 16th of November, of $750,000, so we're a bit shy on that, but we have at least three very live prospects that we are expecting to solidify here within the next week or two. And assuming all of them come in at where our discussions are, we could potentially be up to $855,000 by, certainly by the end of November. Our benchmarks in terms of how we are using them were to give us an idea of whether we're on track to reach the $1 million mark by the end of December, and our board is steadfast in believing that we are on that pace to be able to do that. So with that, I'll just ask if there are any particular questions regarding where the campaign is at at this point.
So Fred, are the amounts listed, actual cash that has come in, or these?
They're pledges. They're pledges. Well, a few of them have paid on what they have pledged, but part of our explanation to donors, and they appreciate this, is that we are under a set of circumstances where if we were to fall short of our intended goal, that conceivably the project may not move forward. And so, in the case of pledges, they would obviously be relieved of any pledge that was made. And so, many of the donors are simply approaching it that way, but some have also supplied us with checks or whatever.
And they're all cash pledges, Fred? I mean, they're pledges for?
Yeah, yeah, you mean like instead of in-kind or insurance policy?
Right.
Yeah, they're all cash pledges.
Yes. And Fred, what percent of the pledges do you think are for the project as a whole versus the fairgrounds piece of it versus the ball diamonds?
Of the ones that are listed under the category of donations received as of 11/13, I would say probably, probably about 65 percent, maybe two-thirds are on the ball side, and the others are to the fair. Some of them are 50/50 splits, some of them are 100 percent, one way or the other. Several of the ones that are out are in the county, and so will be primarily fair. So, and I would also just mention, since we had a conversation about this back in September, and I believe all of you have received an email that tried to lay out our plan, but we are developing a combined financing business plan for council's review in early January that will take into account how we intend to pay for construction as well as what our anticipated revenues will be once the site is operational.
That would be past the deadline we agreed to though, right, Fred?
Well, I think the resolution said that we would review that at the January 21st meeting, but you would have it well prior to that. If all goes as planned, we'll get it out that first week of January to council so that it can be reviewed before then.
Yeah.
Did the resolution say January 21st, or did it say December 31st?
Did the resolution say January 21st, or did it say December 31st?
Well, the fundraising deadline was as of December 31st. But we indicated that we would be reporting to council at that January 21st meeting.
I think you requested to report the 21st. Was that determined?
The ordinance, I believe, has that date in it. Or not the ordinance, excuse me, the resolution. If we were to go back and review it, I'm pretty sure that that date was actually, because I think somebody looked at what the second regular meeting date was in January.
We should clarify that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Couple of questions that I have, Fred, is out of the pledges, particularly the large ones, are those immediate payments, or are some of those going to be spread over five years or longer?
We don't have very many that are five-year pledges, several that are three-year. But some of them, yes, are spread over time.
So is that really count towards the goal of a million dollars by the end of the year?
I think we're operating under the assumption that it is. Our financing, our approach to financing the project would take into account, obviously, that we have pledges coming in over time. And so part of our financing will likely include or incorporate some short-term bridge loan financing to cover construction costs while pledges come in. And, you know, this, I hope goes without saying, but I'll say it anyway, that we don't stop fundraising at December 31st. Our intent is to try and raise at least another 500,000 within the first four months or so of 2019. Because our intent is to be able to start breaking ground once the construction season gets underway.
Fred, the reason I asked about the pledges was, I'm curious to know, are you confident that the pledges that have been made will all be converted to cash in hand by the end of the year?
I have no reason to doubt otherwise, knowing the sources of those. And it's conceivable, in a couple of cases, that they may just pay it all shortly after the first of the year. I mean, we're in kind of a bit of an awkward situation, asking people for money, when we know that we're sort of under the gun to meet a certain benchmark. And, you know, people naturally wonder, well, what happens if you don't? And, you know, we don't want to put somebody necessarily in the position of having to write a check and then we've got your tariff or send it back or whatever, pay them back. So a lot of folks are opting for the pledge, but I don't see any sign that anybody's going to renege on that.
I wonder more about the mayor's question, Fred. I mean, just from, you know, if there's a significant amount that, you know, that's going to be spread over, you know, two or three years. I guess I thought, and for me, you know, it was even a low threshold, you know, I thought it would be a million dollars to move ahead with anything. And my understanding was that the estimates from even a couple of years ago were that it would take at least a million dollars just to move the dirt and do the, what's it called? Yeah. So, you know, what happens if you don't have a million to do that and you said you might have to, you know, get some financing and bridge financing and that sort of thing? But I just, do you, and remind me, the first phase of the project is going to cost, the last estimate, which is also older, was four million?
Yeah, it's a little over four million. But that's with all the buildings and facilities. That's beyond just the dirt work and infrastructure. But I think the reality is that much of the, we'll call it the above-ground work, we have lots of commitments for in-kind contributions to do a significant share of that work. So we're not overly concerned about the financing of that off the bat. We're more concerned about getting the earthwork and infrastructure in place. And I guess I would say if you can hold off on those questions until you see our financing and business plan report, that that will address those kinds of questions.
Okay.
Obviously, we're well aware of the fact that we not only need a certain amount of money in the bank, but we need to have a revenue stream to support the project as it moves forward. And so we're trying to get all those ducks in a row in terms of our plan for how we move forward. Because, yeah, we don't, the last thing we want to have happen is to get into somebody starting work out there and not being able to finish. If that's what it looks like we're going to be ending up with, then we aren't going to move forward. It's that simple.
I think that's my major concern, is I think even if you reach the million-dollar mark, you're still three million short. And so I think that I would like to see as part of your business plan those pledges of above-ground work that you have from the businesses.
Sure.
Because that's essential.
I agree. And that will be reflected in one way or another there.
Fred, some months ago, you and I had a conversation about the fact that some of our financial institutions didn't seem to want to come to, it was hard to break them free to make pledges. And if one did, maybe others would too. Have you seen any movement in that direction from local banks, for example?
We're having ongoing conversations. And I would say they're good conversations and getting better. Obviously, the situation with State Bank is a little bit in flux, but we're also working on arranging a meeting with the new owners. But I'm reasonably confident that something will materialize before the end of this year. Time will tell, obviously. But we're working on that.
I suppose the other thing I would just like to point out is I am very hopeful that you will meet all of these benchmarks. But I think you should expect that when you come back to our January meeting, we may have additional benchmarks for you to meet. Because we need to see continued progress. I mean, as everyone has pointed out, if we're talking about a $4 million final price tag, you're not only going to have to meet this benchmark, but we're going to have to have additional benchmarks. I mean, you can't use up all your fundraising getting to 1 million if you've got another 3 million to get to.
Right.
So I'm just...
And that's why I say we're developing this as a financing and business plan, so that it's clear how we make this thing come to reality and how it sustains itself down the road.
And I would say that I think you might be met with more accelerated pace of benchmarks. I just think that the speed of this unfortunately has been glacial. And I just think that I don't want the kids of Waverly to wait another 10 years. And so I think we have other...
We're reminded of that on a weekly basis.
I think there are other options for ball fields and other options for, obviously, for the fairgrounds that we need to move on. That was clear when we had our strategic planning sessions. So I echo what Brian says. I hope that it happens and that you get the guarantees and that you present that in January. But, because I don't want to wait much longer than that.
Well, I think, the deadline I think a lot of us are thinking about is what happens to the fair when Fourth Street is under construction?
That's part of it, sure.
I mean, that's kind of a big deadline that we're looking at.
I'm hoping as we move forward, we're keeping in mind that, yes, the 4 million people are using for a figure is what completion of Phase One is. But again, I don't know that, my knowledge is there's an expectation that that's Year One, Year Two. I mean, the fair has already indicated that they currently put a pretty good fair on with tents and portable buildings, those types of things. So their intent would be to grow into that 4 million over a number of years, as they did additional fundraising as the fair got established there. The ball groups can certainly play without lights on the field for a year or two. So I hope that, yes, we need to see a plan on how you're going to get to the end. I guess I would just caution us not to maybe set what we feel are benchmarks when it's not our project, that we should let them set the benchmarks and see if they're reasonable.
Well, that's what I say. I would prefer to put that conversation on hold until you all can see what our financing plan looks like. Because you're right, the fair has already indicated that they don't need every structure up and running in order to host a fair at the site. Certain other infrastructure pieces obviously have to be there, but that may be extended. And they too are developing a number of relationships with potential in-kind contributors that could significantly make those things happen faster and at a much lower price than we've received as estimates. So granted, we have lots of working parts that all need to be meshed together here, and that's what our intent is, to get a plan together that tries to do that.
I think at the last update that we had back in September, Fred, one of the challenges was that the group as a whole developed their business plan.
Yes.
But also each group do their own separately, because if, for instance, if the ball diamond side would fail, Fair Board needs to present us with something that's going to indicate their, how they're going to handle their project.
Well, right now, we're approaching this as an intact project. And I think we can't do that without each of those two, the ball groups on one side and the fair on the other side, having a clear understanding of what their business plan is. But we want to present it as a joint plan, because that's the way the project's been conceptualized. Now, if something goes south and whatever happens, happens, that gets split up in some way, they'll have the ingredients for that. But obviously, there are a number of other decisions that have to be made in terms of, if the fair goes it alone, or, I don't know, if the ball goes it alone, I don't know. We just are anticipating that this project is going to unfold the way that it was intended to unfold.
I can understand that and appreciate it from my side. But if it doesn't, you're theoretically delaying the fair, for instance, another several months while they develop their own business plan, and everyone's concerned about them being on-site by 2020. And so that's why the challenge, I think, was out there. But anyway, you know, I guess the other question I have, would you be, would your group be, consider a meeting with your group and city staff and representatives of the council the middle of December, just for a quick update? So we have some idea of what's going on.
I'm more than happy to present that option to the board and let them decide, but, I mean, I don't know why not. My biggest concern is whether everybody is going to be around mid-December. But we can float the idea certainly.
Well, the 13th of December seems to, calendar-wise, look like it would be a date. It's partly in between. So if you could communicate with your...
Can I get some informal feedback and just let you know whether that seems like it?
That would be fine.
That would be possible.
But I think that would give us an idea, a better idea before waiting till the last few weeks.
What's the, is it still three council people? Is not public meeting? No. Okay?
Any other questions, comments for Fred?
Well, I just want to say, I don't know how it's going to come out. It's kind of a cliffhanger, it sounds to me like. But I do want you to know that, at least speaking for myself, that I appreciate the efforts you have put into this, because I think you have been working on it for a long time.
Thank you. If you would, I'd like to make one public service announcement. Veridian Credit Union is running a campaign right now called Spark the Spirit, where they have four regions, each with several nonprofit entities vying for votes from the public. And so employees at Veridian were asked to nominate nonprofit organizations for consideration in this competition, which is what it is. And Champions Ridge was nominated, and so we are part of the Cedar Valley region. And so if the spirit should move you to spark your keyboards and go to the Veridian Spark Your Spirit website, if you just do a Google search on it, you'll find it. And then go to the Cedar Valley region, and you'll find, I'm not sure exactly how many, about eight or at least nonprofits. Champions Ridge, I think, is the last one that's listed. You could vote once a day between now and November 25th. Just cast your vote for Champions Ridge. Veridian will give the highest vote getter, I think, a $5,000 donation, second highest $2,500, and third $1,000. So actually, I do want to also say, Veridian has been a supporter of the Champions Ridge project over the last several years, and we appreciated that. So anyway, there are several Facebook pages and the Champions Ridge website, and I think also the Breamer County Fair's website have that information on it as well. Okay? Thank you all very much.
Questions or comments? Thank you, Fred, for the update, and we'll look forward to seeing what happens next.
So...
Thank you. Next item, Resolution 18155, a resolution accepting certification filed by the Finance Director to the Breamer County Auditor detailing the amount of new loans, advances, and indebtedness which qualify for payment from tax increment revenues of the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan. Entertain a motion.
I would move approving Resolution 18155, accepting certification filed by the Finance Director of the Breamer County Auditor detailing the amount of new loans, advances, and indebtedness which qualify for payment from tax increment revenues of the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan.
Second?
Motion made and sent. Counsel discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Rafi?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Resolution 18155 carried seven to zero. Next item is approved fiscal year 2018 state urban renewal report. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of fiscal year 2018 state urban renewal report.
urban renewal report. Entertain a motion?
I'll move approval of fiscal year 2018 state urban renewal report.
Second.
Motion made and second. Council discussion. Questions? All those in favor of fiscal year urban renewal report say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Report carried, approved, seven to zero. Resolution 18-161, a resolution approving the vacation of a water main easement in property occupied by the Waverly Health Center. Motion, please.
I'll move approval of Resolution 18-161, approving the vacation of a water main easement in property occupied by the Waverly Health Center.
Second.
Motion made and second. Council discussion. Questions?
I have a question about the expense of, what was it, $22,000 or something like that? Was that on this one? Maybe I'm mixing it up. So this involves no expenditures?
No, just a simple tenant objection.
Just an easement.
Is the water main actually still attached to the rest of the water system?
It may have been abandoned in place. I think that's what it has been.
So somewhere there's just a faucet that we've turned off?
Caped.
Or is capped?
Yeah.
Right.
Could have been, without knowing the exact location, when they acquired some of the houses along H Street.
It actually was contained in a deed that mentioned a water main easement to the city. I don't know that I ever found a water main easement specifically, but when they're borrowing 27 million, I think they wanted to have the tenant objections taken care of. So we're cleaning it up.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Chair.
Yes.
Watzstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Resolution 18-161 approved seven to zero. Resolution 18-162, a resolution approving the release of the maintenance guarantee for the Breezy Hill subdivision. Entertain a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 18-162, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made and second. Council discussion.
Now I can ask my $20,000.
Okay.
What is that for? It says extend...I see what it says, but I don't understand it. Extension of public sewer main per Resolution 1356, $20,000.
So back in 20...November 2013, we entered into a development agreement. We have the 29th Avenue lift station, and we cost shared in extending it over to the development. They then carried 100% of the cost within the development. So our portion of that was $20,000 that we paid them on or about December of 2014, when we accepted the project.
So that's not current?
No.
Okay. Well, that makes more sense then. Okay. I thought it was like a current expenditure that was going to be required.
No, we're showing what we did expense on the project.
Got it. Okay. And that's not been developed yet, correct?
That's a parcel. We did approve some subdivision, not too long ago.
They had an objection to another house being built. That was that issue, wasn't it?
It was a separate...it wasn't part of Breezy Hill.
Right.
No. Okay.
At Breezy Hill, there was five lots created, so nice-sized lots, a little over half acre in size, if anyone's interested.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Watzstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Resolution 18-162 approved seven to zero. Resolution 18-163, resolution approving lease agreements between the City of Waverly and William Low, James Jansen, and KW Farms Incorporated. Entertain a motion, please.
Move approval of Resolution 18-163, approving lease agreements between the City of Waverly and William Low, James Jansen, and KW Farms Incorporated for the safety zone acquisition parcels of land that are adjacent to their properties for the amount of $225 per acre.
Second.
Motion made and second. Council discussion. This would be for the farm ground that's surrounding the airport.
And the safety zone around.
Yep. Very good.
I think it was...looks like a fair rent, and the parcels are so small that, you know, it makes a lot of sense to lease those to the people who are farming adjacent property.
Any other comments, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Watzstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Resolution 18-163 approved. Resolution 18-164, a resolution accepting the Coleman Park Safety Surface Improvement Project as complete and approving change order number one and final pay request to mat construction of Sumner, Iowa. Hang on, Deb.
I just want to clarify that this is approving only finalizing the concrete work. The project won't be done until we install the port-in-place surfacing, which will be next spring. They require 48 degrees for like four days in a row in order to install that, and we were just too late. So if...and when I read this, it confused me too. So if you could approve the concrete work and finalize the concrete work, that'd be appreciated.
I'll move approval of Resolution 18-164, accepting the Coleman Park Safety Service Improvement Project as complete and approving change order number one in the amount of $1,374 increase and final pay request in the amount of $34,706.30 to mat construction of Sumner, Iowa.
Second.
Motion made and second. Council discussion.
Do we need to amend it to say that it's the concrete portion of it, and it's not complete yet? Or how does that work?
If you finalize the project now, if you finalize the project now, we'll have very shallow weighting tools over there.
Right.
And it will...it will still hurt if you fall off the play equipment.
Is it a different company that's installing the second surface?
Yeah.
So while this is complete with mat construction, there's someone else we're going to have to pay later when they put the next surface on.
So should we strike, starting after improvements, where it says project as complete from this? Just to be clear, we're not saying the project is complete?
What would happen if we would insert?
Concrete portion.
Between safety and surface, sub-surface, simplify it as an idea?
We could go into the resolution itself and amend that. The first whereas, and mat whereas...first whereas, mat construction of Sumner, Iowa is completed, the Coleman Park Safety Service Improvement Project, we could add in after completed, their portion of...if there's going to be another group coming in to finish it.
Their portion of.
That would work.
That would work.
Or has completed the...
Has completed their portion of the Coleman Park Safety Surface Improvement Project.
We need to change the beginning part, too, that says it's complete. Are you talking in the first line?
Yeah. That first line would need to be changed as well. This is approving accepting the Coleman Park Safety Improvement Project to date.
Would you just say, accepting a portion of the Coleman Park Safety Surface Improvement Project?
There you go. That's good.
Yes.
Then you identify who's completed their portion, and I think that accomplishes it. I like it.
That's good.
I would make that motion. Carly, you've got that?
Got it.
I would second the motion to amend.
I would accept that as a friendly amendment to the motion.
Good. Save one vote. Save one. Vote once.
We're all squared away with amendments and motions, and Carly's going to change the wording, so we don't pay it twice.
Yeah, I think you should have voted the amendment, right?
Yes.
Put the amendment first, and then the amended resolution.
All those in favor of the friendly amendment, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Amendment approved. Now, we have any other discussion on that project?
We've worked that well.
I think you did fine. We'll make sure it's right.
Roll call vote on 18-4, Resolution 18-164, please.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Watzstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
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 Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
I would second the motion to amend.
I would accept that as a friendly amendment to the motion.
Good. Save one vote. Save one. Vote once.
We're all squared away with amendments and motions, and Carly's going to change the wording, so we don't pay it twice.
Yeah, I think you should have voted the amendment, right?
Yes.
Put the amendment first, and then the amended resolution.
All those in favor of the friendly amendment, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Amendment approved. Now, we have any other discussion on that project?
We've worked that well.
I think you did fine. We'll make sure it's right.
Roll call vote on 18-4, Resolution 18-164, please.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Watzstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Watzstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
I would second the motion to amend.
I would accept that as a friendly amendment to the motion.
Good. Save one vote. Save one. Vote once.
We're all squared away with amendments and motions, and Carly's going to change the wording, so we don't pay it twice.
Yeah, I think you should have voted the amendment, right?
Yes.
Put the amendment first, and then the amended resolution.
All those in favor of the friendly amendment, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Amendment approved. Now, we have any other discussion on that project?
We've worked that well.
I think you did fine. We'll make sure it's right.
Roll call vote on 18-4, Resolution 18-164, please.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Watzstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Watzstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Watzstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
I would second the motion to amend.
I would accept that as a friendly amendment to the motion.
Good. Save one vote. Save one. Vote once.
We're all squared away with amendments and motions, and Carly's going to change the wording, so we don't pay it twice.
Yeah, I think you should have voted the amendment, right?
Yes.
Put the amendment first, and then the amended resolution.
All those in favor of the friendly amendment, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Amendment approved. Now, we have any other discussion on that project?
We've worked that well.
I think you did fine. We'll make sure it's right.
Roll call vote on 18-4, Resolution 18-164, please.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Watzstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Resolution 18-161 approved seven to zero. Resolution 18-162, a resolution approving the release of the maintenance guarantee for the Breezy Hill subdivision. Entertain a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 18-162, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made and second. Council discussion. Or questions for staff? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Watzstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Orderance 10-53 approved seven to zero. Reports from boards and commissions. City of Waverly State Annual Financial Report.
So one thing I want to draw attention to on this, I was looking over on the second page, we have the renew...the revenues, and there's a line item for intergovernmental. And if you look at the budgeted amount compared to the total actual, there's a difference of about $1 million. Now, my understanding that there's some sort of perhaps funding that got pushed off to a different year. I'm looking at kind of $3.6 million is the budgeted, and maybe I can't read it, another $2.6 is the actual. I was hoping to get a little clarification as to what the difference was.
Your intergovernmental revenues are funds from either the federal government, the state government, or other local governments. And typically, this is going to be your grants that you receive for your projects, and we can budget for one year, and we actually get the revenues in the next year, or vice versa.
didn't make it kind of a continuous drive, so. But it's just, it's marked now with pink.
I don't think I see too many people parking there, but that's good to know.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Cangis.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Resolution 1048 regarding parking, second reading is approved seven to zero. First reading of ordinance 1053, an ordinance amending the current Waverly Tiff Ordinance 1025, in connection with the adoption of amendment number three to the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan. Entertain a motion.
I would move the first reading of ordinance 1053, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion. Or questions for staff? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Resolution 1048 regarding parking, second reading is approved seven to zero. First reading of ordinance 1053, an ordinance amending the current Waverly Tiff Ordinance 1025, in connection with the adoption of amendment number three to the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan. Entertain a motion.
I would move the first reading of ordinance 1053, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion. Or questions for staff? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Resolution 1053 approved seven to zero. Reports from boards and commissions. City of Waverly State Annual Financial Report.
So, one thing I wanted to draw attention to on this, I was looking over on the second page, we have the renew, the revenues, and there's a line item for intergovernmental. And if you look at the budgeted amount compared to the total actual, there's a difference of about $1 million. Now, my understanding that there's some sort of, perhaps, funding that got pushed off to a different year. I'm looking at kind of 3.6 million is the budgeted, and maybe I can't read it, another 2.6 is the actual. I was hoping to get a little clarification as to what the difference was.
Your intergovernmental revenues are funds from either the federal government, the state government, or other local governments. And typically, this is going to be your grants that you receive for your projects, and you, we can budget for one year, and we actually get the revenues in the next year, or vice versa. And I believe this one is the FAA one that we received for one of the airport projects that was budgeted one year. We received part of it in each of the two fiscal years.
Okay.
So you realize you budget so far ahead that you're planning for one project, and you don't get it, well, for instance, the FAA one, you have to expend the funds first before you get reimbursed, you're reimbursed a month of 90%, I think, of what we're getting, received.
It was the sort of thing where I saw a $1 million difference between budget and actual, and it made me a little nervous.
That's pretty huge. And that's usually what it is, you cross fiscal years when either expenditures are in or revenues.
I mean, I noticed that, you know, bottom line didn't seem to be hurting us in the long run, so.
No.
Okay.
Your capital projects have a difference of $800,000, so the two are probably correlated as to the funding and the capital, they both did not occur in the same year. That's where the offset, oftentimes, you're going to see that parallel.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, another, if not received in the record? Monthly financial report? Questions? Received in the record, airport commission minutes from October 11th, 2018. Received in the record, senior calendar, November 2018. Their last 5:06 dinner, I think it was, they actually ran out of food. So they had an excellent turnout for that function, but they're doing, they're doing a fine job there. Senior calendars received in the record. Staff comments?
I don't believe we have any, sir.
Okay, thank you. City council comments?
I'm once again going to invite people to join me for a beer. I'm going to the beach house. The, the other thing that I would like to point out is, we had a very nice holiday celebration with the city staff this past Friday. It was great to see so many of our city staff there. It reminds me of the great work that all the people working for the city do.